All this special meeting to order. And if you would like to, who's your best chair?
Uh, Sean. I'll be here. Still no way.[28.12][28.12](laughing)
You want to call your meeting to order?
I'll call our meeting to order. I've been on board trustee.
Alright. Very good. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Coto, who I believe will introduce us and introduce Dr. Farr to make a presentation.
Yes, the reason we're gathered together this evening is we're going to hear from South Piedmont Community College as it relates to their building program that was recently passed as part of the 2016 referendum. And then on the county's portion of that will be the financing aspect of the building program. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Farr.
Okay, thank you. We have a presentation. And I really just want to talk a little bit about the state of the college as it is today. As you all know, I began January 1st. So in this time, there is a lot that I have learned. I came into South Piedmont at a wonderful time when we had the support of all of Union County to really advance ourselves as a college, to be more integrated in our community, to be able to offer programs and services better because of the general obligation bond that we were able to really get the support of the community to have. And I mean, I could not thank the county enough. And as I come in here, what was very important to me was to understand what the thinking was behind the bond because I needed to know what the history was leading up to that point. And for my staff and myself to really look critically at everything that went into decision-making because our obligation is to satisfy what was promised, what the county has actually given us to make sure that we were meeting those expectations or exceeding those expectations, but doing what we said we were going to do. And so in doing this, we actually looked at, from our institutional research department, what was happening across the area. So for instance, Michelle's going to talk a little bit more in detail about each of the projects associated with the bond. But for us, things like looking at the new building in Western Union County. What I needed to know is, what is it like in Western Union County? What are the demographics? What are the target populations? What is the job profile out there? When you have individuals there that are looking to go to a community college, are they choosing South Piedmont or are they choosing another community college? And if they are, what are they taking? And so gathering all of this data together, we actually went on a retreat to make sure that when we were talking about the programs that were going to be in the new building on Monroe campus, in the new building in Western Union County, and looking at the programs that we were planning to expand in those areas, that we were doing it with data behind those decisions. And what we always say is, our accountability for this funding is to be able to show you that we have done what we have said we were going to do. And so my impressions of the college was that we were really behind this. And I felt this connection with our county, with our entire service area, in terms of the support that has been given and our ability to actually meet the needs of our employers, of our students, of our other stakeholders. One thing that was very impressive, because I've been at a number of community colleges. And when I looked at what we have done in our capital campaign and in our annual campaign, is very impressive. To have 100% donations from our Board of Trustees and our foundation directors, and 93% of all the employees at the college gave. And those numbers for a college our size are actually quite impressive. And so not only are we looking at the support that I quickly recognized from our county, but also those that are close to the college, just in looking at those two data points. And as you can see, our enrollment has been increasing in this last fiscal year. And not every college can say that because you may know that oftentimes in a community college, the enrollment parallels, or I should say, in opposite direction of the economy. So as the economy starts to go down, enrollment in community college tends to go up because people are looking to retool to get back into the workforce. But as we're starting to really, in terms of economically grow in our area, we are also experiencing some growth. And you can see between fall 2016 and fall 2015, we had a headcount increase of 170. This point in the spring semester, we're already up, 195. So overall, we're looking at 365 increased lives. Because I always talk about, when we talk about enrollment, we're really talking about the number of people that come into our institution to change their lives. And so I think that's, for the snapshot of this semester, quite impressive. And so I want to then turn it over as we continue to talk about this, to talk about an update on our bond project. So I'm going to have Michelle Brock give us, give us an update on where we are.
Thank you. And thank you all for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I did want to give you an update on the bond projects. I know that's foremost in everyone's minds. As you know very well, we were, we were given $40.2 million to renovate and construct several buildings. And our plans are very ambitious. And like Dr. Farr said, our biggest concern is doing what we said we would do with the money because we think that is hugely important to you, to retain your trust into the Union County voters. So each time that we speak about our projects, we go back to that. We've got to do what we said we would do. The biggest building that we will build with that money is our new building on our Old Charlotte Highway campus. This is going to be a STEM building, so it will focus on science, technology, engineering, and math. It will be a three-story building, 75,000 square feet. You all gave us $1 million about 10 years ago to plan this building. And we did that. We used that $1 million. I believe that was in maybe 2006, '07. And so we pulled those plans back out to see what still makes sense and then what needs to be updated. I'm happy to say about 95% of that building is going to stay just like we designed it about 10 years ago. The bottom floor will have the most efficient layout for our student support services. So that will house our student services division, our business office, our bookstore. There'll be a library and an academic support lab on that floor, as well as a large student commons area for students to congregate and study or have student activities. And then the second floor will house math and general purpose classrooms for our general education courses. And then the third floor of that building will house our science. So that will truly be the focal point of our campus. When you turn into the driveway of the Old Charlotte Highway campus, you'll have Building A on your left, Building B on your right, and you will be looking at this new building. So it will truly be the focal point of the campus for us. We anticipate breaking ground on that building in 2017. We've been told by the architects that that's a 12-month construction period, which means we'll occupy the building in the first half of 2019. So we're really excited about that one. Another building that we have been talking at great length about recently is our Tyson Family Center for Technology. You see there, I've got the budget for it. $4.9 million plus $1.5 million. In our general obligation bond, we had allocated $4.9 million for this building. But you'll remember that last March, we were, there was a Connect NC bond, which is a $2 billion bond that then gets all North Carolina community colleges. And South Piedmont's portion of that is almost $3.2 million. So we had already been awarded, or been given approval by the state more community colleges, $1.5 million to construct a second floor in the warehouse portion of the Tyson Family Center. So we will use that $1.5 million of Connect NC money plus the $4.9 to complete renovations of the Tyson Family Center. We, as Dr. Farr said, the senior leadership team had a retreat a couple of weeks ago. And we, we looked at all of our projects as a whole. We did not say, okay, today we're going to focus on the STEM, and then six months from now we'll focus on Tyson. Instead, we looked at all of our programs in all of our buildings to see what makes sense. And so what we identified was that this Tyson Family Center really is the hub for our career and technical education programs. So now we have a focus. It seems that in the past, when we had, when we were thinking about this building, if we needed space, we'd throw it into the Tyson Family Center. Now we have a, we have a focus. We can say, does that fit in with career and technical education? We want to be intentional. We want to leave room for programs to expand. We don't want to finish this construction and say, it'd be great to, if we could double the space of our welding program. But we can't because now we've put several more programs in Tyson Family Center, and we're landlocked, and no programs have any room to expand. So instead, we're being intentional. We're really talking. Joyce does a lot of talking with her folks to see where they would like to be, what kind of space do they need, and where does that make sense? So in the Tyson Family Center, we will have some general purpose classrooms that can be later fitted into a program when that need arises. Again, we think that we will begin that renovation sometime in 2017, which means they should be through sometime in 2018. And then we also have the classroom building in Western Union County. At this time, we are looking at our land acquisition. So that's going to determine the timeline for that building. We see this as a general purpose building, some general education courses. Like Dr. Farr said, we have done a lot of institutional research on the western part of Union County. What is that demographic? What is that industry? Where are people going to college? If they're going to a community college and they're not coming to South Piedmont, where are they going and what are they taking? And all of the data that we are seeing lends us to think that we need to offer general education courses at that, at that location. Again, we're trying to be very intentional with data-driven decisions. And the pictures that you have there are just an example of what we see that we would like to have in that building. Very flexible spaces, furniture that can come together quickly for a meeting or break apart for individual study groups and things such as that. Depend, our timeline will really depend on when we are able to get that land. And we think the construction time will be about 12 months on that. So we're hoping to break ground in early 2018, which means we would occupy in early 2019. After we complete the new building on the Old Charlotte Highway campus, then we will be ready to start renovating Building A, which right now houses basic skills. It houses our BLAT program. It houses the Early College. And we see that those programs going back into Building A. Again, when we did our retreat, we came up with focuses for each building. And this building lends itself to applied science and technology and the Early College and basic skills, like I said. We haven't got into the specifics of that renovation yet, but I'm hoping that that can be done in phases so that, so that we don't have to relocate everyone who is in that building, but instead, we can do that piecemeal. Again, we'll start that immediately after construction of the STEM building is completed. So we hope that will start in early 2019 and be through in early 2020. These are aggressive timelines that we will follow. And then the last thing that we will do is renovation of our Building B. That's the newest building on our campus. It was built in 2003 and hasn't been renovated since then. That will be our Allied Health and Nursing building. It will also house EMS and our CNA classes. That will, that renovation, we expect to start in 2020 and also be completed in 2020. I'm happy to answer any questions related to construction. If not, I'll turn it over to Joyce Wong.
Thank you, Michelle. And I also thank you for having us tonight. There's not anything better than I like to talk about than South Piedmont Community College. I've been asked to tell you about successful partnerships that we have currently going on with South Piedmont. The first one is the UNC System Articulation Agreement, which is an agreement between the UNC system and the community colleges in North Carolina. What that agreement says is, there are certain courses that we can teach at our community colleges that will automatically transfer to the university system in North Carolina with a C or better. We call those UGACSE courses, Universal General Education Transfer Credits. And we, that's a great system for us. Our students are really taking advantage of that. We also have a truck driving partnership that's taught at the Tyson Building. Our next one will begin in April. It is a partnership that we have with Caldwell Community College in which they bring their faculty and their trucks currently to our campus. We have graduated our first class last year, and some of those CDL drivers are on the road currently. We have partnerships with Union County Public Schools. This is just a few of them, our most recent ones. We have our Automotive Systems Technology Program with CADA. They teach that program during the day to their high school students. And we're able to use their facilities at night to teach our adult students. We have our culinary program at Porter Ridge. And again, they use their facilities during the day for their high school students. We use those facilities in the evening. The Automotive Systems Technology Program started last year. We're in our second year, so those students will graduate with their associate degree this year. Our Culinary Arts Program is in its first year. So we're in our second semester of that program. We have our welding program that we're currently teaching at the Tyson Family Center. We also go to Forest Hills and teach it there to those students. They are there at 7:00 in the morning for their welding class. We have a group from Union Academy that comes to our campus, and they are there at 7:00 in the morning for their class. So they come before their actual day begins at their home schools. We have a partnership with, again, with Union County Public School in which we have an Early College located on our campus. Last year, they increased their enrollment at that Early College. We now have almost 400 students attending Early College on our campus. They graduate with their high school degree, but in the, during that time, they are also taking college-level classes. We had 78 students to graduate last year from our Early College. Of that 78, we had 64 that graduated with associate degrees that either are in the workplace currently or have used those degrees to transfer to a four-year university. So we think that is a great thing for the county, for the Early College students, and for Union County Public Schools, as well as South Piedmont. Now, I want to tell you about David. David is a, started to say young man because I think that's a young man, in his 50s, isn't he? Young, yes.[1084.84][1084.84](laughing) It sounds young to me. He's a young man in his early 50s, who all of his life, from high school into adulthood, worked in retail and was laid off after 40, well, not maybe that long, maybe, but a long time in retail. And a number of years, he floundered, could not find a job, and ended up at South Piedmont Community College in our Adult Basic Skills Program. In that Adult Basic Skills Program, he earned his GED. And that just wet his appetite. He went from there to our Human Resources Development Program, where he took resume writing classes, job-seeking classes, and learned how he needed to react after all this time in the workforce. He got interested in welding and talked to our welding instructors about going into that program and asked if he could use the $250 voucher that he received for completing his GED to take the welding course. And he did. He graduated from our welding program through continuing education and is now working a full-time job in welding in Union County. David is just one of our success stories. And Elaine Clawfelter is going to come up and share a couple more.
I'll share one more with you. We have quite a few students at South Piedmont, I'm sure you know. And I think I admire them every day that they come through my office. I work in student services. So I see quite a bit of students that come through. About five years ago, we had to put into place and implement something for SACS called a QEP, which is Quality Enhancement Plan. And through that surfaced our advising center. And out of our advising center, we had to show SACS, which is our crediting body, how we were going to monitor our students. And so with Michelle's help and others through our business office, we were able to obtain a, I guess it's like a retention software called Starfish. So a lot of our students, or most of our curriculum students anyway, go through this process called Starfish. It connects our faculty with our counselors. So our counselors can see anything that the faculty put into Starfish if a student is having an issue or having problems or anything of that nature. So we're going to call this student Sharon. And Sharon was low on her academics very, very badly. And that sends a flag to our counselors. And at that point, our counselor reached out to Sharon to find out what was going on. And she has some baggage. A lot of times, our students come with some baggage. Sometimes, we never know anything about that. So Sharon reached out to our counselor. Our counselor started contacting her. Her GPA was well below a 2.0. A student can go through all of our classes at South Piedmont, but if they do not have a 2.0 to graduate with their GPA, they won't graduate, even if they finished everything. So our desire is to help those students maintain and obtain a GPA high enough so that they can graduate. After Sharon reached out to our counselor, our counselor sat down with her with an academic success plan and helped her show time management and what was going on in her life. She was struggling and worked out some things that was able, she was able to be successful in a really good way. As she kept working with her, as our counselor kept working with our counselor, the counselor helped her show that she needed to reduce some of her hours and take some seated classes instead of some online classes to help her get focused and to maintain a little bit more accountability than what she'd been doing. After that next semester, her GPA went up a little bit more. She was still on probation, but it was going in the right direction. At this point, Sharon shares with our counselor what's really going on with her life. She is in a very emotional, abusive relationship. She can't, she can't focus on her classes. And so our counselor reaches out to her and helps her to find a counseling, a therapist in the community through the student's insurance company. So the student comes back. She is, she's constantly going to the therapist in the county. She is striving. She's come out of that relationship. Her GPA is well over a 2.0, and she's been very successful. And if it were not for Starfish reaching out to our counselors and our faculty working with our counselors to know this, we would not know and we would not be able to have captured Sharon. So we feel like she's on a good start and we're very proud of Sharon and our Starfish.
So we wanted to share this with you. So it's more than just when we talk about the bonds and the buildings. It's about what we do. I wanted to point out a couple of things specifically. One, in what Michelle was saying, when we looked at these projects, we're not looking at them individually. You can't. It's a comprehensive picture of the college that we're data-driven in our decision-making and that everything we do impacts lives. So I want to thank you for your time. I sincerely want to thank you for having us come together to be able to present to you because this is not something that happens in every community, certainly not in every community college that I'm aware of, where we actually have a joint meeting like this. So thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, we are open to it. If not, I will pass it back to Ms. Coto.
Ooh, then I will turn it over to Mr. Yates, who is our Administrative Services Director as well as our CFO. And he will talk about, and I think it's going to take you probably a minute to pull up presentations, but he will talk to you about how the money aspect of all this works.
Thank you, Cindy. My chairs. Dr. Farr, welcome. I want to talk to you about kind of how the financing works, how the money of this works. I don't have exciting success stories.[1452.44][1452.44](laughing) Sorry, it's more nuts and bolts.
We'll give you some, though.[1455.74][1455.74](laughing)
So I think that this will look somewhat familiar to some of our board because our strategy and funding and structure is very similar to how we fund the UCPS bonds and how we plan to fund the library bonds. So my folks, I apologize. You've seen these slides mostly before. What we'll talk about is the process for appropriating and spending the referendum funding. How do you actually get to the point where you can write those checks and actually do those contracts and get your design work done and all those interesting things that I'm sure you're wanting to do? What is the appropriation plan? How's the cash flow work? And then how about the next steps that are in the process? Because you're chomping at the bit to get going, and we're chomping at the bit for you to get going. So we want to be sure we provide a path for you. I want to talk real quick about appropriation versus cash flow. Because you hear us talk about those all the time. And I know that we kind of live in our world in county financing and how the county works and how the county works, maybe a little different than how SPCC works. And when we're talking about appropriation, that represents that legal authority that the board gives for, to spend the money. So that gives you authorization to enter in the contracts. There's usually cash that backs that or estimated revenue. And then you go through a process we refer to as encumbering the money or encumbrances. I believe there's other guys using encumbered accounting, so I doubt that you're much different from us in that aspect. But what that means is it allows you then to commit resources to contracts and then to commit those and get those moving down the road. The other part of that is that you don't necessarily have the cash in hand, and it can be based on anticipated future funds. And that appropriation usually then occurs by project. For you, there's four or five projects, so that appropriation will be done by project to you in SPCC. Now, cash flow is a little different, because cash flow is the nuts and bolts part. How does it get paid? So when you're talking about cash flow, it means we have enough cash on hand then to write the check to pay the bills, based on actual expenditures. It's sent through wires. We manage to pull cash, which means all of the cash in the county is in one large bank account where, or investment pool, where we invest our funds. And then payments for capital then are made on a reimbursement basis. I want to talk about, real quick about that, because I think this may be important for you, given the size of some of your bonding projects. We typically would do it on a reimbursement basis. However, we can work with Michelle and her staff to be sure that if that causes a challenge for you on a cash flow basis, we can work around that. It's not, that's not a hard and fast rule. That's a process that we normally would do. It's how we handle UCPS, but they have more cash on hand probably than you do as an organization. So that's not a hard and fast. That is something that we can work through, because I'm sure our commission would prefer you to be able to move forward with your projects versus waiting until you get each tranche of funding. The initial appropriation we anticipate to be about $1.7 million, and this is based on the draw schedule I already received from Michelle initially. I was looking at the dates on your presentation. That's a little, I think it'll be a little different than what I initially saw. So this is based on our original draw schedule that you've given, that you've given to us. The initial appropriation of about 1.7 would allow you to move forward with design in accordance with your schedule. So that'd give you the appropriation authority to go out and go ahead and enter into those contracts for the architectural work, the design and engineering, all that initial work before you get to construction. Then following that, the additional tranche of design and construction funds for the FY 2018 process, that's about 23 and a half million dollars, and then that allows you to move forward with all of your construction work. Because once the board appropriates it, then it's available to you. And that step, the 2018 budget is normally adopted in about mid-J, and that funding becomes available for the CIP at the point of adoption, not on July 1st. At least, that's typical for us, and we normally do that because the capital is kind of different. The cash flow process, once you're appropriated, you may go ahead and start spending as needed. You'll need to send the request for reimbursement, and we'll wire the funds as needed back to you. Or again, like I said, we could work out something where we can make that wire instantaneous. There's a lot of ways to do this, I won't get hung up on the technical aspect of it, but we can work with you. Pull cash in the short run will be used to make up that funding. And when it's time, when we see our cash need reaches a certain level, then we go to market and borrow the funds. What that allows us to do is not borrow the funds in advance of spending and incur those interest costs. It allows us to save those interest costs and then go when it's appropriate and when it makes sense with the timing of the market. Then we're sort of cash flow planning, then minimizes the borrowing. And what we do is take operations of the county, the county's capital program, the UCPS capital program, its debt and bond piece, the library bond piece, and we kind of chart that all out. There's a giant worksheet and flowchart of how all that works, and my staff, and we take care of that. So the question is always, what's the tax rate impact? And this is two, this is a comparison of two ways to look at the tax rate. If you'll notice, the Carolina blue color.
Right, that's strange.
The Carolina blue color here is the, if you set the tax rate just in time to cover the debt cost, what the impact would be. And as you can see, there's a peak here of about a penny and a half, just a little 1.55 cents. But instead, what we've discussed with our board, and I believe will come forward as the budget recommendation, is a, what we refer to as a smooth tax rate, or a smooth tax rate. What that does is allows us to cut the head off, or the peak off, the tax rate impact. So you see here, we can work across at one and a quarter cents all the way out to FY, all the way out to about FY 2024. And that keeps this then from jumping up to that max. Your peak here then is 125, and then if you follow it all the way down, these, to the smooth rate and the peak are, what we refer to as an outright or just in time rate, will join back together at about 1.08 cents. What that allows us to do is, if we go ahead and start in 2018, we build up a little bit of cushion into our sinking fund, our debt service sinking fund, and then we pay that out at a time. So instead of having that and having a max tax rate here, we have that nice smooth tax rate, so the taxpayer can know what to expect. It remains relatively level. And when you pair this then with the library funding, and you pair that with the UCPS funding, that total tax rate becomes about three cents versus about four cents. So it's a little thing, but it allows some certainty to the programming. And then when you reach a point in this timeframe where your balance of your sinking fund starts to reduce the requirement, you may even see the smooth rate, depending upon the market rates or investment rates and those other things, start to actually reduce at a faster pace than what we anticipate. Because we make some assumptions. This is a, this is a model. So there's lots of assumptions in there about the interest rate in the market, what our investment interest earnings are and so forth, as well as our property values. So all of those things, if they go in different directions, can reduce that tax rate impact. I wanted to talk about this, because in, one of the things that I, as a CFO, have a little bit of concern about is looking at the buying power of your bonds. And I talked to Dr. Farr and Michelle about this a little bit, I think, when we met. If you compare kind of what you're budgeting or what you're planning, expenditures are on the project, with a fairly conservative inflation rate, I think the longer you elongate that construction schedule, you risk losing buying power in that process. And when we ran the numbers, we were looking at about a loss of 2.7 million of buying power over the life of your program. And what that means or translates to is that if you were planning on building, let's say, a 35,000 square foot facility, then you can only maybe build a 30,000 square foot facility, because this is bond funding, it's capped. Unless there's going to be additional funds added, either outright through cash or through another debt instrument, then there's not other funding to go with that. Or you do find other source through the state or something else. But it limits the buying power in that. So I just wanted to kind of give this to you as a thought, that the faster or the, the more that you can bring for those projects in the 18, 19 timeframe, the better those projects can be and be closer to what you anticipated it would be. Because you're working off of estimates that were probably this time last year, if not older. I believe that was the case. So they've already lost a year in that inflationary environment. If I could tell you where inflation was going, I probably wouldn't be standing here today. But I do think that inflation's going to start to creep up. I think the Treasury's already, the Federal Reserve's starting to signal that already in their rate moves. So we're paying attention to this on our side of the house, particularly through our utility projects and in our, and the other projects we have. And for, it's a challenge particularly for you because of the elongated schedule of your construction. When we're looking at UCPS, they're squeezed into about a 12 to 18 month timeframe, so the inflationary risk there is pretty minimal. But for us, and particularly because our library project is tied to the western campus project as well, this is a concern that I think we all, I mean, to kind of just keep an eye on. And the faster we can move that forward, the better off we'll be. This is kind of the draw schedule, our encumbering schedule that you've seen already goes through, and you can just see what each year, we put that together, not having known that you're going to put it in your slides, so that's repetitive, and I apologize. And this is just the encumbrance schedule. So this is actually how it'll be appropriated based on the schedules we have going forward. So with that, what are the next steps? Well, I think we can go ahead and, with a request from the Board of Trustees, the Board can appropriate the initial tranche of funding of 1.67 million for design, this allowing you to go ahead on those projects that you have that are starting in early 2017 particularly, to go ahead and get started with contracting those. We'll monitor and analyze the cash flow and work through the bond issuance, and that's something we do with the LGC. And then we would expect, as part of the adoption of 2018 budget, is that additional tranche of about 23 and a half million dollars for construction, allowing you to move forward then with those construction projects, particularly with the STEM building that you're looking at. So with that, I kind of ran through that quickly. There's a lot of moving parts to it, but the concepts are pretty straightforward. Are there any questions that you would have?
Kind of like you want to spend money quicker.
Yes. We can do that. It's a little contrary to what I would normally say, but when it comes to bond funding, and particularly in capital, on the capital side of the house, if the voters have approved it, and you have the capability to move forward, the faster you can move forward, particularly with market movement and those kinds of things, there, it allows us to mitigate a lot of that risk, because the longer you go out on the curve, the longer you go out the window, there's a lot lower risk to that equation. So, and as my folks know, kind of risk averse at times, particularly when it comes to financial risks.
You know, the contract is awful busy right now, and I was just wondering, is there any, what is your method of, like a quick pay or anything to, to make an incentive to get a better price on some of our construction work, or is that?
That's going to be up to your folks. Because we can, and like I said, we can work out with you, we can pay your invoices directly. We can pay you. We can have, I know, from time to time, depending on how big the check is, the schools actually tell us today we need to wire so they can do their own wire the check through the EFT. We can work with you on the flexibility of that. Usually, we've been doing reimbursement, but we've had a lot of smaller projects to this point, so, and not having, haven't had a chance to review your financial statements, so I'm not sure where you sit on a cash basis. But we definitely don't want to harm the normal operations, day-to-day operations of the organization, so we can absolutely work with you to be sure that that funding comes to you as fast as it's necessary.
Those are.
All right. Any other questions?
We certainly appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all for coming and joining. I'm wearing dual hats, so I'm proud to be a part of the organization. And again, thank you for your time, and I hope this was informative, and I look forward to building forward with you all.
I appreciate you listening to us. Absolutely. I'll make a couple of statements. And started this, you know, Dr. McGee came in, and when, when Dr. Sador left, he came in and he gave us a lot of ideas, a lot of guidance, which really helped all of us. And one thing he did, he said, you guys have a good staff. That reinforced what we thought and knew. And in doing that, and knowing he had a year, he really wanted six months. It took a year to, and led us for a year. And we felt very fortunate that he, he did that. And one thing that he led us into, he said, look for your president. You need to find someone who's very knowledgeable, you know, we've got a bond issuer approved. And so they need to know how to move along with that and have some background. And he said, they also have to get along with the staff. And from that standpoint, they're going to be really good in the community. We started out with 25 applicants, got down to one. It was pretty quick to do that. And we feel very fortunate. We think we have good leadership. We made a very good choice, and I think you'll find it should be very good to work with. And I found, in talking with her, she's pretty knowledgeable, and she really led the staff in a positive manner, and challenged them, which was very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Uh-huh. Both of us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Charles, you got it.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion from the trustees to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions?
What?
Questions? Someone's going to go on that too. I do adjourn.